They should have gone. Not the wicked going today. I might know Josh.
Okay, I'll call the order, the August 15th, 2022 Regular Meeting of Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be our Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, I'll ask Pastor Josh Fraser to come forward for the invocation. So if everyone, please stand for the pledge. Let us pray. God in heaven, we come before you today. We say thank you for all the blessings that you've given to us, specifically the blessing of being able to be in the area that we are, to live here in Haywood County, and all that comes with that. We pray that today, as decisions are being made and things are being presented, as issues are addressed and concerns, I pray that ultimately, the best thing that's good for all of us here in Haywood County would be made. I thank you for our commissioners and all those who are able to make decisions and have power here in our county. I pray that you would help give them guidance and wisdom in all they do. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you, Pastor Josh. Our next order of business will be public hearing, and we do have a public hearing tonight with the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency to receive public comment on a draft plan for spending $7,975,000 in the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding provided to the state for Tropical Storm Fred Recovery. We have Cesar Castro, the Chief Policy and Planning Officer here tonight from the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency. So if you'd please come forward, Mr. Castro. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Cesar Castro. I'm the Chief Policy and Planning Officer for the Office of Recovery and Resiliency of the state of North Carolina. And we're here today to talk about the 2021 Community Development Block Grant for disaster recovery related to Tropical Storm Fred. Before we get started, though, I just want to acknowledge, you know, some of y'all that might be here today might have been impacted directly or indirectly by the tropical storm. And as an office, we just want to acknowledge that it is difficult often to go through a disaster, and we acknowledge that. And we're just here today to present a little bit of the work that we have done to understand the impacts of the storm and some of the help we can provide. So with that being said, we're gonna go through the presentation, talk about a little bit of the programming we have here for you all today, and take some comments and questions. So a little bit of housekeeping for you today. So we're gonna talk about some of the HUD allocations that have been granted to the Office of Recovery and Resiliency. If you're a survivor of the Tropical Storm Fred or a previous disaster, please reach out to FEMA or our offices at RebuildNC.gov to provide some additional assistance with those particular help. Our partners here from OSBN, DR, are here to provide any questions you may have or any help. Their offices are right across the hall, actually, and they're here from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and in case you have any questions related to any direct assistance that you might have received after the storm. As we open up the comments or open up the conversation, if you want to review the draft of the action plan that is available on our website, rebuildnc.gov, about policies and reports and action plans, you will see the action plan there, and you can review it and take a look at what we have posted. We're gonna go through the presentation, then we're gonna open it up for some public comments and some feedback related to the storm and the action plan we are putting in front of you. And then if you have any other questions that you may not have ready for us today, you can also mail us, email us, at publiccomments@rebuildnc.gov, or you may also call us at If you have, if you're, if you know or are a person with a disability, that needs additional help in providing a public comment on the action plan. So those are some of the housekeeping items. I should also add, if you speak Spanish, we also have printed copies of the action, of the presentation, so please, we have a colleague over here to the left, to my right, I guess, who can provide that hard copy. And in case you're wondering, the captions are also provided in English on my left and in Spanish on my right, so for folks that might be hard of hearing, you may also take a look at the captions there, so that's what it's there for. So we're here today to talk about the CDBGDR HUD allocation, and here's the agenda. So we're gonna do a little bit of introductions about who we are as ANCOR, the Office of Recovery and Resiliency. We're gonna talk a little bit about Tropical Storm Fred, which some of you already know the impacts of the storm. Then we're gonna give you a little bit of overview of what the CDBGDR allocation is about. Then we're gonna open it up a little bit to discuss what the allocations that we're presenting today, some of the programming we want to address with the funding, and ultimately give you the opportunity to provide some comments and feedback on the presentation and the action plan. So a little bit about ANCOR, in case you don't know who we are, we're an office, we're Say What Office? We were established in 2018 by the North Carolina General Assembly, and we were established to administer the all CDBGDR funds, which are the funds that are given to the state from HUD to respond to a disaster or hurricane that has occurred in the state of North Carolina. Typically, ANCOR and its partners can assist residents directly or indirectly impacted by a disaster by providing services to restore housing and support communities damaged by a precedentally declared disaster, or to act to mitigate against future disasters. To fulfill our requirements that HUD and the federal government provides for this type of funding, we must host a, we must draft an action plan that talks about the unmet needs in the communities impacted by a storm, and we must also tie that unmet needs to the programming we're putting forth, how we're gonna spend the funding. So we're here to talk about that piece of the puzzle today. Just a little bit more about ANCOR and what we do. You might hear, you might also hear us referred to as Rebuild NC. So collectively, the programs that we administer are, the disaster recovery programs may be known as Rebuild NC. Currently, ANCOR manages about $1 billion of CDBGDR and CDBG mitigation funding that are tied to the response to Hurricane Florence and Hurricane Matthew. So these are long-term recovery efforts that are undergoing. Today, though, we're here to describe and talk about what occurred in 2021 and the allocation that was provided to respond to that disaster of about $8 million. If you want to find out more about what we do as an agency, please go to rebuildnc.gov, and you can find out a little bit more about the other programs we are undertaking with some of the funding. I may not have to describe too deeply what the impacts of Tropical Storm Fred were to this community, but just as a recap, back in, almost a year ago, Governor Ray Cooper requested a major disaster declaration due to tropical storm, to the remnants of Tropical Storm Fred that came through the, by, through the region. Tropical moisture combined with some enhanced rain that occurred the weekend before or the days prior to the event ended up with quite a lot of rain accumulating quite quick in the region, five to 15 inches reported, which resulted in the major disaster and impact that y'all saw firsthand. About a month later, President Biden declared a major disaster for the region, that disaster known as DR 4617. That declaration allow for a federal response, allow for, well, I should say, a wider response to the event. Part of the response came via FEMA, so they have a couple of programs that you might have been aware of that were immediately available to folks in the area. So FEMA Individual Assistance has provided so far about $5 million of assistance to folks impacted by the storm. FEMA PA, which is Public Assistance, has been, has allocated about $8.2 million of assistance as a response to the storm. And then also FEMA HMGP was sent for hazard mitigation planning, hazard mitigation processes that are undergoing as a response to the storm. Those were also, there's some funding available that's been obligated for that in the tune of almost $200,000. In addition to the federal response, immediately after the storm, our friends here at NCO SBM were available and came to the region. Their own budget was about $44 million, which is a large part of a larger budget, a larger allocation of $124 million that was provided as a response to the storm. So those were a little bit of the elements that we have seen so far as a response to Tropical Storm Fred. In case you're not familiar with FEMA stands for, FEMA stands for Federal Emergency Management Agency, and I should add that OSBN so far has been able to, as of July, and these numbers may be outdated, has been able to respond or provide assistance to 632 applications to their housing recovery assistance program. Sometimes, often, when we talk about federal funding or these buckets of allocation, it's hard to discern what they all mean, but just to give you a little bit more background of what this means in the context of Haywood County. So CDBGDR typically is an allocation that happens after the disaster has been declared, and Congress provides additional funding to respond to that particular disaster based on long-term recovery needs that have been assessed at the federal level. These unmet needs are not, are those needs that have not been covered yet by another program and can only be covered by this particular pot of funding. Those special appropriations, the funding typically can address disaster relief, long-term recovery, some restoration of infrastructure, and some housing and economic revitalization needs that might still be in the area. One thing to keep in mind about this pot of funding is that by design, CDBGDR, the disaster recovery funding from HUD, only supplements what's already out there in terms of the recovery process, and it's not meant to supplement, it's not meant to, you know, it's meant to supplement, I should say. And so we work closely with FEMA to make sure that what their efforts are, what they're doing is not duplicative of what we're trying to do, in essence. So for the 2021 allocation from HUD, just to give you a little bit what that means and what that entail, on May, May of this year, May 24, HUD allocated about $8 million of CDBGDR funds to North Carolina to support the long-term recovery efforts related to the storm. That funding outlined in the Federal Register Notice 87FR 31636, provided about $7 million specifically for the unmet needs identified in Haywood County, and about additional, an additional $1 million to think about mitigation measures or long-term recovery efforts. And when we talk about what this means, what HUD identified as the most impacted area was the SIP code of 28716, but we have, what we have done in the office at ANCOR is expand that so that we can provide assistance and programming to the entire county of Haywood. The funding comes with a few requirements, as one would expect, so the funding must be spent within six years of the grant agreement. As I mentioned, 15% of the allocation must be for mitigation activities or mitigation activities that are gonna address future events. The overall programming must benefit 70% of LMI persons or low-income or moderate-income individuals, which, under HUD and our own metrics, means that folks that are earning less than 80% of the area medium income. In order for us to move forward with the funding, we must engage the public, so we must provide an opportunity for folks to provide feedback, such as these public hearings, the public meetings, and also by publishing the action plan. Ultimately, in order for us to move forward with any funding or any allocation, HUD must approve the action plan and also provide feedback on how we're gonna move forward before we can access the funding. As I mentioned earlier, a key component of what we do at ANCOR is understanding what the unmet needs are based on the allocation provided and what we hear from stakeholders. So as part of the action plan we're here to present and talk about today, you will see a discussion about unmet needs or an unmet needs assessment, and this is the first attempt at analyzing what is still lingering in the community but still needs to be addressed in the long term after Tropical Storm Fred. The analysis focuses specifically on Haywood County, so when you read the action plan, you will see Haywood County be in the focus, and it attempts to quantify the unmet needs or the lingering needs primarily for housing, economic development, and infrastructure. So it's hard to see likely for some of you here, but the table on the right highlights, based on HUD's methodology and our own understanding of what the community has provided us in terms of data and a wider understanding of what's still happening, we estimate that about $16 billion of unmet needs are still lingering related to housing in Haywood County. We estimate, based on HUD's methodology, that about $1 million are still lingering out there of unmet needs for infrastructure. And we also took, we couldn't fully derive what the economic impact is, meaning the economic impact to small businesses that were impacted by the storm. Our sample size was not too large to understand those unmet needs. Nonetheless, we understand that some programming has been set aside for small businesses in the area, and we'll continue to coordinate with the county to make sure that those needs are addressed in future amendments of this particular planning process. But that gives you a picture of what we determine some of the unmet needs are for Tropical Storm Fred recovery efforts. In addition to understanding what the unmet needs are based on our assessment, we also must tie those unmet needs with programming and our budget for how we're gonna spend the funds that have been allocated to the state of North Carolina. So the table you're looking at now provides a summary of what that looks like. Much of the funding, $7 million, has been allocated to provide support to Haywood County for affordable housing development, or housing development that is gonna prolong affordability and access to housing for low-income communities in the county. Some funding has also been allocated, about half a million dollars, for planning-related activities. So this is to take a long-term look at the recovery effort and what's needed to be prepared for the next disaster. In addition to that, you may, we have a budget for administrative costs. This is related to the funding that takes to oversee the allocation, the funding, so that's capped at 5% of the allocation, so you will see that reflected in the, in the table here, about $400,000 that we can spend on administrative costs, and then the rest, as I mentioned earlier, is all allocated for local activities, for a total of $8 million, of about $8 million. One last piece of the puzzle to add is 100% of this funding is set aside to benefit low-income and moderate-income communities in Haywood County. Just a little bit more about what the budget entails. The programming, as I mentioned, must be connected to the unmet needs we have assessed in our action plan, and that's reflected in the budget we just showed you. ANCOR will focus primarily, as I mentioned, on housing recovery and planning activities to support the recovery efforts and to maximize the long-term benefits of impacted communities. We're also gonna partner with Haywood County, with y'all, to make sure that the partnership leverages local knowledge and understanding of what is needed to help communities recover. The mitigation measures, these are the measures that are gonna take into account how do we, how do we prepare for the future disaster. They're gonna be embedded as part of the affordable housing development, so that means making sure that the homes are built in a manner or constructed in a manner that will help eliminate or reduce a future potential hazard. The planning costs, I mentioned earlier, as a, as a set aside, will include support for planning activities that are conducted in the region or in the county, so anything related to planning, that funding will be set aside for that particular effort. Now I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the program so we can distinguish what those mean in case you're interested. So as I mentioned, the Affordable Housing Development Fund, about $7 million, vast majority of the funding is allocated to it, and that will be for a partnership with Haywood County that will fund shovel-ready projects of affordable housing development that we'll work together with the county to identify. Also, the partnership with Haywood County to identify and pilot new affordable housing development proposals, ideas that we can leverage for future mitigation. The funding would also be, may be supported by other local partners that Haywood County and others can identify as partners in delivering the affordable housing. The local regional and planning support, again, about fi, about half a million dollars afforded to that is to fund local and planning activities that are proposed by Haywood County or local partners. The funding, so will be provided, will also provide, for example, a housing analysis to understand long-term development needs in the area and what the risk is for a future event of a, of a tropical storm or another hazard, for example, that may come to the area. Additional support will be provided by ANCOR, my office, the planning office, to make sure that we're supporting any planning efforts in the region and to make sure that the communities are already enabled to bounce back if another storm was to come to the area. Just for your awareness, eligibility-wise, what this means, what are the causes that are eligible for this kind of programming, particularly the affordable housing piece of it, so the funding can, can provide direct assistance with the activity delivery, so administering, monitoring the program, allocating costs for staff indirectly or indirectly or indirectly. Also can fund architecture and engineering design, permitting fees, developer fees, in essence, all that comes with building housing that, for the long-term recovery of the county. Things that are now eligible are pre-application costs, so these are costs that are before the project gets started. Any advances of any type are not eligible. Also, facility operating costs or maintenance costs are not eligible under our rubric here of this particular pot of funding. And any off-site improvements are also not eligible for this allocation. Just a few more slides, just to give you an idea of what, a bigger picture of what's, how we got here and where we're going. We got word back in April that the allocation was coming from HUD, and so we started talking and engaging with a variety of stakeholders locally in Haywood County and across the region to understand what the impact was of the storm. Based on those conversations and our available data, we started drafting the action plan, which is being presented today, and which is being presented today and is available online, in order to get a sense of what our programming should be or what our activity should be. We published the action plan back in August, August 1st, and it's been up on our website for folks to review, and it's gonna be up for public comment until the end of the month, until August 30th. We scheduled this meeting to talk to y'all about it and to make sure that we heard your feedback for today, and then as we get going in the next few months, what's gonna happen is we'll take the comments, we'll address whatever feedback was being provided, and we'll submit the final draft of the action plan to HUD. They'll take a look, they have forty-five days to provide feedback to us, and once they take a look, hopefully, if everything goes well, we'll be ready by December to sign an agreement with HUD in order to execute the grant agreement and move forward with the program that we have presented to you today. So that's a little bit of what to expect. So with that, we'll move to the, that was the last slide related to the action plan, so we can open it up now to some public comments, and just to give you a sense of what to expect with these public comments, you know, if you haven't had a chance, as I mentioned, you may review the draft of this document that I've been alluding to on our website, rebuildnc.gov. You can submit your comments and your questions via email, publiccomments@rebuildnc.gov, in case you're not ready to provide a comment today. If you wish to, you can also mail us a comment, our address is posted up there, I don't know if you can see it, but it's publiccomments@pobox110465durmnc27709. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, if you know someone or you're a person with a disability that needs a little bit more help in accessing the action plan or providing a comment to us, you may dial nine eight four eight three three fifty-three fifty, and we'll help you in providing, assisting you in providing the comment or providing a copy of the action plan. As I mentioned, the comments must be submitted until August 30th, by 5:00 PM, we'll, we'll take your comments until then, and at least for today, if you would like to comment on this particular presentation, we have a signup sheet here, and we have one name so far, and I'll set this over here so that if folks are interested in providing a comment, we'll take your comment and feedback from y'all today, otherwise, you have all these other venues to provide comments on this action plan. Thank you so much.
Okay, so do you want to?
Yep.
Ask, so would anyone care to comment on this particular issue? I know we have public comment later, but this would just be on this particular issue, and you'd need to come up to the podium and identify yourself and ask a question.
We do have a Lindsay, Lindsay somebody, Lindsay Parham, I'm sorry, here to comment, and then if you can pitch your name.
Good evening, Haywood County Commissioners, Encore, and fellow community members. My name is Lindsay Parram, I'm a native of western North Carolina. I'm a bilingual case management coordinator at a local nonprofit, and I'm a graduate student in the MSW program at Western Carolina University. I'm grateful to be here tonight and for our shared time together, and I'm grateful for the, the time to discuss tropical storm threat action plan for Haywood County. I've spent time on a research project approved by the Institutional Review Board at Western Carolina University, and we have been assessing the emergency and disaster management response for Haywood County flood survivors and its impacts specifically on the immigrant and migrant farming community. It has been an honor to be trusted with our neighbors' stories and experiences. We've heard from both service providers and first responders, as well as the immigrant and migrant farmers and their families, and I want to be clear that I'm not here this evening on behalf of myself. I love western North Carolina and I love my neighbors, and it's my aim to ensure that their voices are heard. There are many findings from our research project that I would like to share, but for the purposes of this public comment section, session this evening, and for the funding that has been, is being discussed, I will focus specifically on the realm of housing. If there's interest in hearing the full research summaries and findings that also include mitigation, I make myself fully available to the Haywood County Commissioners as well as Encore, with the shared goal of improving and honing the emergency disaster management response for the good and well-being of our communities as well as our neighbors. The timetable of the completion of our research project, in tandem with the year anniversary of the flood coming up, this public comment session and the release of funding seems genuinely like perfect timing. I'm very grateful for this window of opportunity, especially as these funds are earmarked for the underserved and the most vulnerable neighbors within our community. With any emergency disaster management response, perfection is not attainable. That is not reality, however, with humility, learning can be achieved and necessary adjustments can be made. I thank you in advance for receiving these thoughts, these findings, and these recommendations with such openness and humility. So briefly, from our research findings, the following feedback was provided in regards to housing. There is a desire from both the flood survivors in the immigrant and migrant farming community as well as service providers and first responders, that a concerted effort in improving the safety and well-being of existing structures, i.e. homes, mobile homes, that would include performing necessary home inspections, restoration and rehab construction, removing leftover trash and debris, and ensuring the existing homes to be sanitary and livable. And again, those are the ones that already exist. Discrepancies were made apparent between those that rent versus that of homeowners. There were concerns communicated surrounding putting money into rehabilitating the immigrant and migrant farmers' homes because they were not, they were transient, when in fact, our research findings noted, and I didn't know this, so this is really helpful for me to understand as well, the immigrant and migrant farmers that were a part of our research findings noted sixty-two point five percent of those impacted, and so what that tells us is that these persons are community members and that sixty-two point five percent in this population have called Haywood County home for ten-plus years. Consideration to move existing mobile home parks to a safer location away from the most at-risk areas by the river. Bilingual language access services to be provided as set forth by Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four to ensure that the immigrant and migrant farming population's human rights are upheld without discrimination, and that all communication and services are provided to those with limited English proficient, otherwise known as LEP, by all parties without discrimination on the basis of race, color, or national origin, and any program or activity that receives federal funding or other federal financial assistance. Simultaneously, this population noted feeling invisible within the community that they call home. Hiring and implementation of English-Spanish-speaking staff at every juncture is necessary. It's necessary as funding is available, and a focused effort to ensure all members of the community know what is available to them is key. As utilized by our neighbors on the coast of North Carolina as they're impacted by hurricanes and subsequent flooding, the local government's implementation of the state's long-term recovery groups, also known as LTRG, would provide a framework that already exists and protocol post-event that provides holistic case management services to walk alongside people as they move forward, as they try to recover from the emergencies such as flooding. LTRGs seek to ensure culturally aware and equitable access to services for all those impacted. And as stated earlier, there's much to consider and much to implement, and I know that all of you sitting here have a lot to consider, as well as Encore, as we consider how we use funding to care for the people in our community. We have a window of opportunity now that has been afforded to us to make changes that can impact lives for the better, and as I said earlier, perfection is not the goal here. But just as Maya Angelou, who found her home over in Winston-Salem, I'm sure many of you are familiar with this, this quote, but she challenged us to do the best that you can until you know better, and then when you know better, you do better. And so we have the information and we have the data. I know the hearts and minds of those in western North Carolina because I was raised here, and I'm very, very, very proud of that. We're kind of unicorns at this point, not a lot of us exist that still live out here. But I adore and encourage you to take the words and recommendations that I bring to you from the voices of our community and to make changes now. I thank you all for your time and providing the space for a conversation. If there are any lingering questions or interest in hearing the research findings, I'm more happy, more than happy to discuss further. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. If you can send us that public comment, we can respond to it.
Yeah, I just got a, a short comment on that. Listening to that, one of the things that concerned me a little bit was, was talking about the affordable housing. As y'all know, we got a thousand and fifty houses coming, but they're saying they're affordable housing, but there's a lot of people in Haywood County that can't pay the amount of money that these houses, they're wanting to rent a one-bedroom apartment, and my comment is, is there any way we could, the public could be notified with what affordable housing would be, and, and part of this, where he was discussing the providing affordable houses for the people that had been, you know, put out of their houses and stuff, would that be up to the county or who would be the, to decide what affordable housing is? That's what I'd be interested in, and she said a lot of stuff that I was interested in, but that's the main concern I've gotten, if there's a possibility, when they start all this work, if we can keep some local people doing a lot of these jobs instead of, you know, people from out of the county and stuff doing them, we've got a lot of local people out of work and stuff that I think it would benefit by using the local contractor's stuff to clean this stuff up and stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for that comment. If we can briefly respond to you from Encore, I will have Tracy Development, Community Development Director to respond.
Thank you. Thank you, yes, Tracy Caloris, Community Development Director, and the HUD.
Speaking to the mic, yeah, there you go, there you go.
The HUD requirements say that for us, affordable housing serves families, like a four-person family, that for Haywood County is making about fifty thousand dollars a year or less, and that would be the market where we would be trying to make sure the houses are affordable, and when we would help your county folks build an apartment building, for example, then we would require that the rents be maintained at a level that's affordable to folks that are making eighty percent of the area average for at least twenty years.
Just to recap that, by federal regulation, we have mandate to maintain those homes at affordability level for many years, as Tracy mentioned, but also to monitor that affordability over time, so that's the part of the funding requirements for this allocation. Is there anybody else that wanted to comment? I only have, I only have your name. Well, thank you so much, Commissioners, I appreciate the time and everything for hosting us today.
Thank you for coming on. Okay, our next order of business is public comment session. At this time, we're gonna have a recess and let, somebody says something, at this time, we're gonna have a recess and let them break down their, their equipment before we go into their meeting, so we'll take about a five-minute recess. So we'll take about a five-minute recess.[282.27]
Through grants and government funding of the Free Needle Program, more homeless addicts are sought and invited here so that when increased number of addicts is reported, the grants and government funding can be increased. It's about money coming into our county, someone or some group making money. It is not about helping anyone. Eighty-two percent of the folks that die from drug overdose are in the needle exchange program. The main reason I'm here is to speak to you is to ask you to please stop allowing this to happen. It's hurting and killing the addicts, and there's great potential hazard to citizens and unknowing tourists. I attend none of a Baptist church, and at least three times weekly before our doors open, a sweep is done to remove all the discarded used syringes. Coaches and parents have to sweep ball fields before practices and games to remove used needles. The used needles are on public sidewalks, in our yards, in our parking lots. There's no exchange, so don't call it a needle exchange. Hospitals and doctors' offices label used needles as biohazardous waste materials and treat them extremely cautiously, carefully dropping them in a locked box to be disposed of properly. We as citizens should never, ever have to pick them up. It's like it's no big deal to our town officials like they're discarded gum wrappers. Some carry disease, some have fentanyl remaining in them. Make it stop. Until it's stopped, you must warn all citizens and tourists to be cautious. Use signs, use needle drop boxes placed around town. Most people, especially the tourists, which is our main income in Haywood County, don't know the severity of this problem. Tourists need to know to scan playgrounds before letting their children loose to play. Until you make it stop, you must create strict protocol as to what to do when used needles are found. Since the Haywood County Health Department hands out free needles and also sends out mobile units to deliver needles to addicts that can't come to the Health Department, here's an idea that a friend came up with. My friend suggests that the Health Department should also have a biohazardous waste pickup unit that will go out into our county and pick up the needles in a safe manner when one is found. Until you make it stop, you must put out warnings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Our next person to sign up to speak is Jeff Sellers. Jeff Sellers, welcome Jeff.
Commissioners, I have some documents here to hand out tonight. I made each of you a copy. Last week, we had an opportunity to meet with Representative Mike Clampett. Reference, one of the topics we discussed was H.R. 103. I would like to direct your attention, the first page of that handout is the bill itself. The second page, if you would look down at one of the lower paragraphs, it says 2021-180. It talks about the modification of quarantine and isolation authority. Notwithstanding the first sentence and subsection D of this section, the state health director or local health director shall have the authority to determine and order that a class or category of persons need to be quarantined or isolated to protect the public. Then it goes on and talks about how long they could be isolated. Commissioners, that creates a real problem when we start trying to isolate people in any movement here in this county. And you say, well, what does that have to do with us as county commissioners? Well, let me share this with you. Several months ago, I received a call from Mr. Paul Turner. This was right before he was, he had resigned from the Health and Human Services Board. At that time, he attempted to recruit me based on my degree in social work and my career path in law enforcement. He wanted me to put in an application to replace him. He thought I would be a good fit, and he encouraged me to apply. He explained the application process, told me that I needed to put in an application. He said I'd go before the review board and the, I would receive an appointment from the commissioners if I was approved. He told me to feel free to use his name as a reference. Then he said one thing. He said, and this is a quote that I wrote down. He said, "I prefer you not to share this with just anyone. We don't advertise this, but we are all pro-vaccine, and we've got to keep those anti-vaxxers off the board." That's a direct quote from him. Commissioners, that tells me that every time you get a recommendations coming from the HHS Board, it's a one-sided recommendation. You're not getting all the information about any given subject, and the deck is stacked against those who have not had a vaccine. You're only being told one side of the story. This subject affects every individual in this county, therefore, every individual should have a fair representation in this Board. This Board should be independent and transparent in their decision-making process. There are those people such as Melanie Williams, Melinda Davis, and Janet Preston, who are all well-qualified to be on this Board. May I go on for just a moment? Okay. Melinda Davis actually made an application, and she was not, she was denied a seat at the table. Janet Preston actually challenged Dr. Jaben and Sarah Henderson on the Board to debate her on the subject of COVID-19, and there were no takers. New information is coming out to light every week about these vaccines. They're not relied as what they were sold to be, and they're now finding that they are responsible for life-threatening dangers and even death to certain individuals, and we don't know who those individuals are. As we've all heard for the past fifty years from pro-abortion groups, it's my body, it's my choice. Well, when it comes to my health and COVID-19 vaccine, the same thing applies. It's my body and my choice. Commissioners, we were, you were elected to represent the entire county and not just sixty percent of the people. I recommend that you investigate this matter and make changes to the Board so that all the residents of the county will be represented. And the reason I came up with the sixty percent of the people was that I, the most recent thing that I did a research on showed that there was approximately sixty-two percent of the people fully vaccinated in this county. And we know that those vaccinations don't last forever. You have to keep getting shots. And if you don't keep getting shots, you're no longer vaccinated. You're no longer protected. So there's a lot of people that are not protected, and I'd ask you to investigate this and look into it and see what could be done about better representation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person to stand up to speak is Scott Wilson. Welcome Scott.
Yes, Scott Wilson, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And what I want to do is just provide some feedback on the drug problem in Haywood County and a comment on the needle exchange program. I pay attention quite a bit to the Mountaineer publication daily, and I've noticed there's been a lot of reporting of drug-related arrests in Haywood. It's picked up substantially, and it's just over the last couple of months. I think the police and the Sheriff Department has done a great job in Haywood of really, you know, arresting more people. And maybe you've had a chance to be more proactive after COVID, but that was the first kind of comment I have for you is thank you to the Sheriff and the Police Department for your efforts. The other thing is, it appears the court system is recognizing the challenges for Haywood citizens when you let those arrested quickly out and they commit more crimes. I've just noticed that there's been more lockup of repeat offenders, so thank you for keeping the citizens safe to the court system. It looks like things have changed in the last several months. The third really topic is really the syringe exchange program, and I think that's the policy that needs to be reviewed and addressed for public safety. I reviewed today the Syringe Services Program in North Carolina. It was updated May 25th of this year, and though I'm not an authority in the subject, I am a citizen of Haywood. But here's what I've noticed, and I have it in front of me here. It talks about the reduced spread of HIV, and again, I'm paraphrasing here. It talks about the reduced needle injuries to law enforcement, encourages individuals to use drugs, explicitly to enroll in evidence-based treatment. Talks about reducing the number of drug overdoses in the state. Then it talks about the disposal of used needles and hypodermic syringes. So when I speak to citizens really around the county, I consistently hear about, you know, the discarding of needles. And I guess my question really to the county commissioners is what is your role in this syringe exchange program? Any type of updates on the opiate settlement? And one maybe last thing is that the Carolina Journal in June of this year had a great article on the, really the division of the two approaches to the needle program. So if you get a chance to read the article, I thought it was very informative, but I think one of the messages you're going to hear tonight is that the needle exchange needs to be addressed in this county. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. And this person to sign up to speak is Barry Peppers. Welcome Barry.
Good evening, Commissioners and fellow citizens. I want to talk about the elephant in the room, school safety and security. I'm Major Barry Peppers, retired Air Force Officer and a retired American Airlines pilot. We have fourteen schools in Haywood County, seven elementary schools, and my understanding is those schools do not have, at least the elementary schools, full-time school resource officers. They may rotate, but I don't know about that. In my opinion, the day and the time has come to stop this insanity of not having armed police in our schools. What's the definition of insanity? Continuing the same behavior but expecting a different result. In the past twenty-three years, there's been six major shootings in the country, killing over a hundred and twenty-three children. In these six examples, no SROs were present, or if the police did show up, they failed to stop the threat, some showing extreme cowardice. Now, I'm very pro-law enforcement, make no mistake. In Uvalde, Texas, two months ago, the latest mass shooting, twenty-one people were killed by a deranged eighteen-year-old transvestite named Salvador Ramos. Ramos spent forty-four minutes in that school killing kids as they texted and called their parents, and the cops didn't do a damn thing. They stood outside the door and procrastinated, and you know what happened. We must have highly-trained operators in each of our schools that will bring immediate, violent, deadly force to anybody that would harm one of our children. Hope is not a plan of action. Neighborhood Scout, a real estate data firm, says that Haywood County and Waynesville's the number-one town in North Carolina for violent crime per capita, behind Fayetteville and Charlotte. The United States southern border, as we all know, is wide open. Over two million people came in across our border in 2021 alone. We don't know who these people are. They haven't been vetted. People have been flown all over the country and bused all over the country. We don't know who they are. And by the way, they've been flown into the Asheville Airport and distributed around our, this part of the state. Our jails, because of COVID, have been largely emptied. That's maybe changing, but judges and courts have not been putting enough violent criminals in jail. Police agencies like Asheville are understaffed, below fifty percent. The criminal threat is greater than ever to our community and to our schools. We are facing a perfect storm for a major crime to occur right here in Haywood County. Now, some of you are asking, and I get it, how do we fund this? Who pays for it? Well, Haywood County found the money for needle exchange, Haywood County found the money for pickleball, and somebody's funding this low-barrier housing in our state, in our area, in our community. Eighty-seven thousand armed IRS agents are going to be hired. I don't see any SROs in that bill. I understand grant money's available to enhance our security. Where's that? So there's three types of people in the world. Sheep, our children. Wolves, people that would prey on our children. Sheepdogs. A sheepdog is somebody that will fight to the death to protect the sheep. We've been lucky in Haywood County that we haven't had a tragedy. Hope and prayer are not a plan of action. So, I ask you, and we ask you, to find the money, work with our incoming sheriff, harden our schools, do whatever it takes, hire, train, deploy highly competent law enforcement and/or guardians who will instantly move toward the sound of gunfire in our schools and immediately do what is necessary to stop the threat, to include use violent deadly force to neutralize anybody that would harm our children. Remember, hope is not a plan of action, and our children deserve better.
Okay, the next person to stand up to speak is Sharon Walls.
Thank you very much for having me tonight. My name is Sharon Walls, and I live and own a business here in Waynesville, North Carolina. My business is located at 147 Walnut Street. My home is at 142 Maple Street. And right across the street from my business and my home is Walnut Village. And as you know, recently, our county does have a huge drug problem, as we know. Recently, we had to call the law enforcement to the laundromat because there was a lady down there naked. Okay? These people are coming through my parking lot, doing all their things, okay? And I have my staff in there and my guests in my business that we have to take care of. They're begging for money from my guests, and very disrespectful. But however, I recently found out that our Health Department is encouraging the drug problem. They are apparently telling the callers how to get free syringes, and even a mobile program to deliver them to users who need them. As a parent, if I had a child who had a drug problem, the last thing I want to do is help them, help him or her kill themselves with these drugs. That is exactly what these free syringes programs are doing. The Health Department is enabling drug use by giving this information out. I think every one of you, Commissioners or parents, if you have a child with a drug addiction, what kind of help would you want from our Health Department and our supposed experts who work there? Maybe some guidance on how to find a rehab program, or maybe how to talk with your child about his or her problems, certainly not giving them all free syringes that they need to continue using. It blows my mind that the tax dollars are supporting this, and it needs to stop now. Because the people that work for me and in my company at night, we have to make sure they're safely escorted out of the building because of the homeless people around that area, you know? And I think if this was your business, you would be very concerned about this also. So I would really appreciate if this was considered. Thank you.
The next person to stand up to speak is Janet Preston. Welcome Janet.
Good evening. I am Janet Preston. I'm an RN who lives here in Haywood County. In last Wednesday's Mountaineer, there was an article about the community health assessment produced every three years by our illustrious public health folks. The most recent assessment determined that the top three health concerns facing Haywood County were as follows: obesity, substance use, and mental illness. I'd like to address the mental issue, substance use. While they also include smoking and drinking in this category, I'm particularly concerned about illegal drug use. Haywood County has a huge problem with discarded syringes, and we've been told that Haywood County and the town of Waynesville are no longer funding the syringe exchange programs. However, how many of you realize that we still have free syringes being given out freely in our county, and that many of these syringes are being facilitated by our Health Department? Haywood County has had the highest rate of unintended opioid deaths in North Carolina for the past seven years, so we definitely have a problem. We have also had needle sticks from people coming into contact with these discarded syringes. Do you know what will happen when one of these needles is contaminated with fentanyl? Someone's going to die. Whether that is a child on a local playground, or sports field, or someone's pet, or someone trying to clean up a homeless person's trash left in their yard in front of their business, that's going to happen. We are told to call our local law enforcement if we see syringes that need to be picked up, but is that really the best use of their time and skills? I mean, really? You know, they go through law enforcement training and all this extra training, and then they're used as trash men to pick up syringes because people can't even be bothered to put them somewhere safe? I'm absolutely furious that as a taxpayer, I'm funding this crap. I'm sure that the syringes are being paid for by some grant from Harm Reduction or Down Home NC or some other idiot group that enjoys enabling drug addicts to basically kill themselves. However, we are paying the salaries for the folks who work at the Health Department who are giving out contact information on how to get these syringes. And one of our group called last week to ensure that, and she got the contact information from the Health Department staffer of who to call to get these syringes, and they even have a mobile service that will deliver syringes to addicts. And I want to point out that they do not have a free mobile syringe delivery service for diabetics, just for addicts. I want to make certain that every one of you know about this, and I'm going to make it my mission to make sure that the law-abiding, taxpaying citizens of our county know about this as well. Please stop our Health Department from enabling this program immediately. Addicts do not need to be assisted with their drug use. They need structured rehab programs. They need help to stop using, not to help to continue using.
Okay, but anybody else? That's all I have that signed up, is what anyone else care to speak? Email when I close the public comment session. We'll move to constituent concerns. I just have a couple right off the bat. Tonight, we will be, tonight I'll be signing orders to end the state of emergency for COVID and the state of emergency for Tropical Storm Fred. So those emergencies will be over with. And then also, this Saturday, August the 20th, in the Crusoe Community, the public's invited to join a time of fellowship and togetherness to remember those lost on August 17th and to honor the rescuers who came from all over to help. There will be representatives from several agencies from all over the state who came to assist in the days following the floods. There will be a service at noon at the East Fork Baptist Church, followed by a community gathering on the grounds of the Crusoe Community Center and Crusoe Fire and Rescue. Events will be ongoing from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Please be patient, as traffic that day may get heavy at times for those attending. Please drive slowly through Crusoe and follow all parking attendants' directions carefully. And that is a two-lane road going in and out of Crusoe, so I'm sure it'll be busy. So I'm going to make those comments, and then, does anyone else have constituent concerns that they want? Does anybody want to start?
I'm going to comment on the Health Department stuff.
Yeah, so Brandon is a representative on the Health Department.
I guess it's me that's in the hot seat here. I've seen the other Commissioners keep looking over this way, but I do want to clarify, and I have touch base with the county manager as well, but as far as the Health Department is concerned, we are not handing out any free needles. What I've learned tonight is there may be some information that's being shared from the Health Department on where to get those, but I can tell you, as far as I know, and I am a Board Member, it's on the Health Board, there is no needle exchange. We ended that quite some time ago, can't remember the date now, so we're no longer doing that. Now, if they're getting needles somewhere else, that could be an issue. And I will say, I do know we've got a drug problem here in Haywood County. I know that as a business owner, I don't know where Ms. Walls is at, I'm sure you're having to pick up needles. I know that is an issue, no doubt about that. But as far as the Health Department's concerned, the only needles that I'm aware of, and I'm going to look to our county manager, who they report to as well, to see if he has any comments, but I think that we may hand out some diabetic needles. Other than that, there's no other needles being handed out. Brian, you want to comment on that?
Sure. The syringe exchange program first started with the Linkages to Care State Grant. After six, nine months, it was clear that the program wasn't working here in Haywood like we had designed. We decided to go a different direction, got out of the contract with the Harm Reduction Coalition, and we worked with Meridian. We've been more successful in actually linking people to CARE. That contract with Meridian doesn't include a needle exchange program. So I do know that North Carolina Harm Reduction is still operating in the county, but it's with no county funds. They're not using any county resources. If we are giving information out to addicts or users, I'm guessing it's from a communicable disease standpoint, because sharing needles does spread hepatitis and other types of illness. But I'll double-check with the Health Department tomorrow. And as far as a mobile syringe exchange program, I know that's not the county operating it, but I'll find out and report back at the next meeting.
I know that you also commented to me earlier when we talked about this, that the Harm Reduction did have us listed on their website. There's an old website and a new website, and I think if you go to that website, you'll see that we are listed, but we are not listed on the new one, and we have asked twice, I think it is, to be taken off the old website that's no longer used. And I think just as of lately, that's being handled, is that right Brian?
Actually, I looked through the first email to the Harm Reduction Coalition about our concerns of still being listed was on July 7th, when we found out. We asked them to take it down, and it seems like they've changed hosts or internet providers, and they don't have access to the old system. But this morning, I talked with Aradov, and he's making some headway that they have found out who can control that old system, but the new system does not have Haywood County listed because that would be inaccurate.
And I'll just add to that, too. If anybody would like to speak to me, feel free to do so. You can give me a call or swing by and see me. I'd be happy to talk to you. If there's something going on outside of what I know, I would like to know. So feel free to contact me, and I promise you, I will check into it. I know that there were some other comments made. I know Mr. Sellers, I think you'd made a few comments that concern me as well. You know, a diverse Board is a good Board. You can look at us, and believe it or not, we disagree from time to time, and I think that's a good thing for any Board. So having a diverse Board is something that's always good, and I don't think that we ever need to work on everybody thinking alike or having the same folks that think alike on any Board, and that's any Board we have. Thank you for bringing that to our attention and sharing that with us. And I'm looking down the list here, looks like most of them are revolved around the drugs and the needle exchange program, which, again, no doubt in my mind, we have a huge problem. We've got a problem with drugs across our nation, and it's going to take a joint effort, I think, between us, from a funding standpoint, and our Sheriff's Department, and our local police departments to work on that, along with our mental health groups. So it's a big problem we're going to have to get together and work on for sure. So I'd like to thank everybody for coming and sharing your thoughts tonight, and it don't go unnoticed, I can promise you that.
Do you want to go?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I hear your concerns. I hear your heartfelt plea. And I too like to go down the list. I don't know if that young gentleman was named Bryce or Brian. I think he has left. Is he still here? Well, I would just like to comment, that fellow is a great example. He pulled himself up by his bootstraps and overcame his difficulties, and I really appreciated what he had to say, and I'm sure you did too. Also, Ms. Brooks, some of your comments I would like to address. I just came from North Carolina, North Carolina County Commissioners Association Conference down in Cabarrus County, and Commissioner Best joined me, and they hand out these county maps, and it's actually a scorecard that we get as Commissioners, and it helps us to see what counties are doing around the state, and we can compare data, compare ideas on how to face a lot of situations. But the latest opioid death report, we are ranked, we have nineteen-point-one deaths per one-hundred-thousand residences. That's what was last year. The number-one county, Forsyth County, let's see, excuse me, I'm looking for Robeson. Just to show you the difference, the rankings around us, all around us here, we're ranked, we had nineteen-point-one deaths per one-hundred-thousand. Lee County had forty-three deaths per one-hundred-thousand residences. Stokes County had fifty-four deaths per one-hundred-thousand folks in their county. Terrell County had fifty-three deaths per one-hundred-thousand. We're sitting at nineteen-point-one. Listen, one's too many. One's too many, I agree. Overall ranking, we ranked 12th. We had 12. We're way down the list, so I don't know. I need to follow up with you to see where you got your information after the meeting. I need to follow up with you to see where you got your information after the meeting, because the state gives this data out, and so as far as deaths per capita, we're really down there. Jackson County, they have a 47.7, the neighboring county. Madison, 36.8. Buncombe, 35.3, that's their rating. And Swain, 49.4. I'm not saying we definitely have a problem. I'm not downplaying. I would like to get with you to see where you found out we were number one in the state.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll get with you afterwards, if that's okay. We can compare. I'd like to find that out. Also, as far as I know, we have never mandated a vaccine requirement as commissioners. I never planned to vote to force anybody to have a vaccine. We've never mandated a vaccine program. I don't plan to do that personally. I can't speak for everybody else, but I don't plan on doing that. Opioid settlement update. We had some extensive meetings on that. It was $26 billion put out there by the pharmaceutical companies in this opioid settlement nationally. There was four major companies involved with that. Kind of makes you a little bit ill, or it does me, to find out that they paid theirself out of murder. Nobody went to jail that I know of. But they paid $26 billion to 50 states, and it's distributed out per capita. And one company, Johnson &amp; Johnson, subsequently got out of the business of making OxyContin. They knew that they were overproducing that drug. They admitted that in the settlement. They knew that it was highly addictive, and they had doctors over-prescribing it. But as far as the update on opioid settlement, Commissioner Best and I went to several meetings down there, and there is a meeting tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. in Jackson County. Our county manager's going to represent us. That is a very complex issue. It's not as much money as you might think distributed to Haywood County over 15 years. It's going to be like a... Mike, Brian, you may want to speak more to that.
It's $5.2 million over 18 years. And the first payment we received just a couple of months ago is $199,000. So it's sort of front-loaded. I think in a couple of years, we'll get about $380,000, and then after about five or six years, it drops to just about a quarter of a million a year. So we're hoping to find out more, but to build a new program, $200,000 is a lot of money. But when you start building response programs or treatment programs, it doesn't go that far.
Yeah, and so to answer that question, I hope that helps you. As far as opioid settlement update, there is Plan A and Plan B, and we're working on that. That's a work in progress. There's another meeting on that at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. So I can't give you a definitive answer. I know at the state level, there are several smaller rural counties down there that's going to get this funding. They're contemplating forming a cooperative, kind of like maybe a four, six-county throw-in together and kind of come up with a regional solution to how they're going to spend the opioid settlement money. And it is defined in certain ways. You have to spend it according to the way they tell you to. And so that's one thing that we want to get all our Ts crossed and Is dotted on that. So that's all I know about that. And I can tell you also that I hear Mr. Peppers. I appreciate your comments, and that's a very emotional topic for all of us. We do have children, all of us do. I know, I saw where Madison County came out and put AR-15s in each school, and I got an email on that. But you know, I got to thinking, Haywood County's kind of been out in front... I think we've got them all took care of, got answers.
Is something, Kirk? You want to say?
I mean, not really. I just wanted them to comment. I mean, especially you, Brandon, as far as the health department goes. Brandon sits on the health department, so he can provide you with more information. And certainly, I don't like to contradict people when they get up there speaking when I'm not certain about the facts, but I was almost certain that we don't provide any needles anymore, because we had that discussion, I believe, over a year ago, and we decided not to continue to fund that and stopped any kind of needle exchange. So there's no tax, none of your tax dollars for Haywood County are being utilized for syringes in Haywood County. Now, you know, everything works two ways, and we have freedom in this country. Unfortunately, there are certain things that we can't control, even though we may want to control those, because there is freedom. And I think North Carolina Harm Reduction, because they can operate that way they can, they can provide those needles. There's nothing that the county can really do about that. But we can control our health board, and certainly, or not necessarily control it, but we can give it some guidance. And so Mr. Sellers will look into that particular issue about saying who can serve on what particular board. When it gets to the vaccines, that's another freedom issue, and I think you're free to either get vaccinated or not get vaccinated. I mean, that's your choice. And I haven't seen anything yet that says anybody has to get vaccinated. It's just one of those choices that we make. And Mr. Peppers, I mean, it'd be nice to provide school safety and security SROs for all the elementary schools. I don't know of any grants out there that would be, it'd certainly be a tax increase, but it's obviously something that needs to be looked at. I can tell you this, the jail's not empty, and it wasn't empty during COVID. It's full, and that's the only reason we're building the jail, is because we've got a full jail. I think that Tommy addressed, as far as the opioid deaths and where we rank, as far as that goes, this is a good little pamphlet, if you wanted to look at it, to see where we rank. And it's nowhere near number one. I just want to make sure that that's, that everybody understands that, that we're not number one in deaths for opioid. This is clear on that. Now, whether it's something's changed the last two years, and I don't know about that, but this is 2020. Maybe so. I don't know where you get the numbers, but that, so...
Don't be commenting from the audience.
And, you know, the other thing is that we do have, in Haywood County, a really good police force. I mean, as far as the sheriff departments go, as the police departments go, it is, it staffed very well. It's difficult, just like in any, anything right now. If you are an employer, which I don't know if any of you all are employers out there, but trying to find people to work is difficult. It's no different from anything in this country. As far as any type of job, they're all having difficulty getting qualified people in there to work. And so that's the same thing with our law enforcement. But it also may be one of the reasons that we are higher on, because you can't have violent crime, you can't have property crimes unless you have people catching those people. That's the only way it gets reported, usually, is that somebody catches that. So I think they're probably doing a pretty good job with law enforcement. You know, can we do better? We can always do better, just like the young lady said, you know, her quote, Ms. Parham said before. So, I mean, I appreciate all these things that have been presented. We're always talking about these things, whether you think that we're not. We always are, in discussing how we can do to do better, to provide a better community. But, I mean, a lot of these things are difficult, as you know, to resolve or otherwise it'd be done. That's all I got.
Anything, Jen?
Of course. So I did, I just did come back from the North Carolina Conference for County Commissioners, and first, let me say before I say anything else, I love public comments. It is probably my favorite part of our meetings, because I believe it keeps us in touch with our citizenry, and I believe that it is so important, and it is protected by our First Amendment, and I think that's just something that we should exercise. I think we should do it respectfully, and I appreciate that everyone that spoke tonight knew what they were going to say when they got up there, and most everybody did it inside that three-minute time limit. So you have to be pretty well thought out to be able to say what's on your mind in a short amount of time. So I appreciate you coming and making us aware of what your concerns are. You know, this opioid thing is very important to me. It's very close to my family. My first cousin lost a child to opioid overdose with a syringe that was laced with fentanyl. She found him in the bathroom of their home. And so my family has lived this firsthand. And it is, it is in every family, and if it's not in every family, give it just a little while, it'll be there. So I do believe that it is an epidemic, and I think that it is, it's maybe getting in some limelight because of this opioid settlement money. We have a great responsibility, I said this to Commissioner Long over the weekend, we have a great responsibility to be wise in how we allocate those dollars. And, you know, it is spread out over such a long time, 18 years. We have to be careful in what we fund. I was pretty vocal with another commissioner from another county during this conference that we had tried the needle exchange program in our county, and in my opinion, it proved itself to be very ineffective, and that I would never be in favor of funding such a program. But there is an initiative out there, and I think it is because of this money being made available, there are people believe that it is, you know, that it's a solution, and that it has worked, and it's worked in other areas, and they are selling that, if you will, to encourage people in making decisions to think about doing those needle exchange programs again. One thing that I've recommended, and I've talked to some of the other commissioners about it, is that, you know, these manufacturers that have these needles, and it's not something that we're doing through the county, but that work these exchange programs, you know, let them put their name on them. And then when they're found on the ballpark at Nenova Baptist Church, when you pick that needle up and it says XYZ Company, it's pretty clear it was not an exchange, because we found them littered someplace else. So hopefully, there are some solutions, and again, it is something that's very near and dear to my heart, and anybody, if we lose anybody, young or old, to drug misuse or abuse, or whatever you want to call it, it's one too many. And I think that we have, we have lost a generation and could possibly lose another generation. I'm from the generation of just say no to drugs. That tells y'all how old I am. And so, you know, we laugh about that, but I remember that now, even in my 50s. So I think that we need to really focus on education and being clear in the ramification and the impacts of those drugs. So anyway, again, I just want to say thanks for coming. I appreciate every time you come and speak, and you get it said in three minutes, and I'm going to do my best, and I'm sure these gentlemen are, too, to do the right thing by you and by our county.
Okay. Okay, and I'll just be real brief. I think it's interesting, maybe y'all don't know this, but the needle exchange legislation was passed by a Republican legislature and signed into law by a Republican governor in the state of North Carolina. So that's where this came, that's where this came from. And the reason was because we had, they were trying to cut down on the HIV incidences of that and hepatitis. When those cases come about, they're usually medicated cases, and it usually overwhelms our hospital, and there's really no money for the hospitals to be paying for that. So I think that's the reason that the state legislature did that, and I know it needs to be tweaked. There is, as Jennifer said, there are some benefits to that. Evidently, there are, because the Republican legislature passed it. So I think they saw some merit in it. It probably needs to be tweaked, but that's just a fact I wanted to get out there. I think that was in 2016 when they did that. And then as far as the school resource officers, Kirk, I think we looked at that about six or seven years ago, it was going to be about a penny on the tax rate, which is about $20 to $30 per taxpayer, is what we figured at that time. And I remember that because Bill Hollingshead, who was the chief of police at Waynesville, said that he would be willing to pay an extra $20 or $30 to make sure a resource officer was in every school. And I agree with him. But I didn't have the support to do, to pass that, but it would be about a penny on the tax rate. So when we talk about that, it comes with a cost, and that would be the cost for that. And, you know, we can look at our next year's budget, and we'll be, we can talk with the school board about that. And there's ways that we can try to get that implemented. I think there is a grant coming down, but it ends. Usually, these grants only last a year or two, then you have to pick them up. So I believe that the school board is, or actually, the school system may be looking at that. And then, and as far as, you know, the drug issue, I sympathize. My business is in Frog Level, and we have lots of drug traffic down there. So I was just telling my fellow commissioners that where my business is, you know, Frog Level is where a lot of people ended up, so. And where my business is, I see it all the time, I hear it all the time, and believe me, if I could do something about it, I would. And I'm a county commissioner. Of course, I'm in town, but, you know, I think I'm just as helpless as everybody else. I wish I could do something about it. And, but the main thing we do is, we're kind of vigilant. We've put up cameras, and I've learned to park my vehicles in a certain way where they can't run through my parking lot like they used to could. So we're figuring it out, and sometimes you just have to take things upon yourselves, and that's what I'm going to do, and my neighbors that are fed up with it, too. So we're hoping we can get rid of these, I guess, bad neighbors, if you will. But anyway, that would be my comments on most of this, and I don't want to belabor the points anymore. But I want to move on to...
Kevin, I've got one more, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
It's on the flood stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
I got sidetracked a little bit. We'll make a comment on Mr. Peppers as well. I have been in contact with several folks in our county law enforcement, of course, about doing other things other than school resource officers. So we are looking at different things, different plans, so hopefully, in the near future, some of that will be coming out. So we are looking at some things that we're working on, so I wanted you to know that. But moving on to the flood stuff, Brian, I may get you to comment again as well. I was approached by a constituent over the weekend that owns a business, and his concern was the mitigation process and the buyout. And his understanding was that us commissioners would be the one that would decide whether or not there was a buyout for his property or not. And I explained to him that that wasn't the case, that once a decision was made at a higher level, it would come back to us whether or not to accept a buyout. So I was just afraid, from what he told me, there was a lot of miscommunication out, that it was up to us as commissioners, and I just wanted to get that out there. Brian, do you mind speaking to that?
Sure. The buyout program actually falls underneath North Carolina Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Program. That could be buyouts. It could also be that the state would come in and help raise a structure to prevent future flooding. The application window was in late winter through late spring. It actually closed March 31st. County staff gathered all the applications. We processed them, sent them to the state. They're under review now. Once the state decides if this project will, you know, case by case, this will be bought out, this one will be raised. However it is, they will notify us. If it's a buyout, then it actually will come back to the commissioners to accept the parcel, the piece of property that they were getting. But it's not the county commissioners deciding if this project goes forward or not. That resides with the state.
Okay, thank you. And then the other piece of that is the timing. I mean, right now, we're looking at, I know personal properties and people that's got homes that they're not even in. I mean, I know of people myself that's still staying in campers that were flooded. So that's the priority right now, and then I know the mitigation part of that process is later on. So unfortunately, it takes a lot of time.
Could I make another comment? There was some comments about sheriff's department staffing, and I think, Brian, I think we talked about that. Could you tell us what you learned in a meeting last week about our sheriff's department staffing levels compared to other counties?
The sheriff commented here, I think, when he gave his annual report, that he was the only sheriff in western North Carolina to be fully staffed on his patrol in the jail and telecommunications. We met with mostly architects that are doing the jail design, and when they heard that information, they said, and they work with sheriffs across the state, actually, and the whole region, and they said, he's probably the only sheriff. the whole region, and they said, he's probably the only sheriff in the state that could say that. Now, I haven't kept up with it to make sure we're still fully staffed, but I do know that the pay and classification study the Board of Commissioners funded was huge, and being able to keep well-qualified employees, not just the sheriff's office, but at social services, everybody, really benefited that, and getting out in front of it before labor prices really started to escalate, and we were very fortunate. Not to say that we haven't had vacancies and some issues, but for the most part, we are in good shape staff-wise.
And one other comment, Kevin, I know I'm going along, but just for everybody's benefit, some of the data that comes from these state meetings is quite shocking. And one thing that came was the population of our age, our age population. You realize that 100 counties, we're 16th as far as oldest population? And it's a big concern, because as you know, you folks in the audience know, there's folks moving in here that we've been discovering. Look outside. I mean, you can't look out a historic courthouse and see the beauty that we see, and people are coming in here, and maybe many of you have. But as commissioners, as county managers at the state level, you sit around and study these demographics, and it's going to throw a huge burden on our EMS, our hospitals, healthcare, because we are an aging county. We're becoming a retirement county. And on the flip side of that, the residents, population 18 years and younger, we're right down toward the bottom in the state, you know, and it concerns me. It gives us a lot to think about as commissioners on how to do forward planning, and where we need to be concentrating a lot of our energy and our focus, because, you know, this is a forecast. It's a very accurate forecast, and you look around, it's a problem. So that came out of that meeting, and it just stuck in my mind, you know, that it's something that we, as commissioners and county staff, we have to consider.
Okay, thanks, Tommy. Okay, we'll move to administrative agency reports, and just to lead in with the number one. The first one is the tropical storm recovery update. We have the Director Rich Trumper and Operations Manager Dana Phillips of the North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management Disaster Recovery here tonight. Welcome, guys. Appreciate y'all coming out.
Evening, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Rich Trumper with the State Budget Management Disaster Recovery Office. Earlier tonight, you heard Cesar talk about the future use of some federal money. We're here tonight to talk about active use of state money. Since January the 10th, we've had an office in this building, directly across the hall, full-time staff, nine to five, Monday through Friday, helping families impacted by tropical storm Fred. Tonight, our office is open, in the anticipation that with the NCOR briefing, there may have been some interest, families looking for help. We have five staff, we have five staff members here tonight to make sure that anybody still looking for assistance could get it this evening. We're going to give a very quick update with me. It's Dana Phillips. He'll give you some statistics in a moment. But in November of 2021, the state budget was passed, and it was $44 million for families impacted by tropical storm Fred. Of that, $20 million was allocated for home reconstructions. As of today, a little over $6.5 million has been spent or obligated toward that effort of rebuilding homes. $15 million was set aside for private roads and bridges. 100% of that money has been spent or allocated at this point. The state legislator has allocated another $5 million. Those funds are not yet available. We have a waiting list for that money. There's an allocation for short-term housing, folks that don't have a safe place to live today. That was $4 million. Less than 10% of that has been tapped. If there are families that need short-term housing, there is money and financial assistance available for that today. For home repairs, there was about $3 million allocated. As we stand here today, 57% of that money has been spent or obligated fixing homes impacted by tropical storm Fred. The final program was for landlord assistance. We've heard there are families living in rental properties that were not safe after the storm. $2 million was allocated for landlords. Less than $500,000 has been used for that purpose. There is a lot of money for landlords that have properties and have tenants that are impacted. We can help those landlords rebuild those properties. Of the $44 million, $24 million has been spent or obligated in six months. That's 54% of the money, helping families in western North Carolina recover from tropical storm Fred. Of that, one of the ways we implemented this program is when we arrived here in Haywood County, we asked the families that were impacted, how can we help you fix your house? And so many of the families brought local vendors to us, people they know and trusted, said, if you're going to fix my house now, hire these folks. They're here. They have the resources. They live in the county. That's the way we were able to help so many families so quickly here in Haywood County. Our team will stay tonight after the meeting for the commissioners, for anybody here in the room that has questions about tropical storm Fred. Again, we're here Monday through Friday, nine to five, and we will be for the foreseeable future. There is no deadline to apply for these funds, yet they are limited. We definitely want people that need help to step forward, ask for help. If you're hoping your neighbor gets help first, and you're saying, I'll wait till the end, please don't do that. Come see us right now. With that, I'm going to let Dana give you guys just a couple of quick updates on the numbers of people that have applied for help, specifically here in Haywood County.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to come here and spend a few minutes and give you a little bit more update on our tropical storm Fred recovery. First thing I want to say is thank you to the Haywood County team. Thank you for opening up your facilities, giving us a wonderful office space across the hall. It's a great place for us to meet with our clients and the local folks that come in asking for assistance. So we certainly appreciate that. We've got a wonderful operations team. Several folks are sitting back there, and again, if anybody has any questions, concerns, or just wants to know more about the program, when we finish up, we'll certainly be around and be happy to answer any questions. So, next slide. There you go. All right, so if you look at the next slide, this is just a little bit of an update on where we're at with our program. You can see that we have received to date 682 total applications have come in since we opened up our office and launched our website. I believe the website launched in mid-January, so since mid-January, we received 682 applications for assistance. Of the 682, 598 have been determined to be eligible. Now, you may ask yourself, what's an eligible application? Some have been withdrawn, some folks said, hey, I don't need assistance, or somebody may have just not have been eligible for the program. Believe it or not, a lot of these numbers were duplicate applicants anyway. So that number's kind of low, so we have a total of 598 eligible applications that we've received. Since we've opened up, we're very proud to announce that we've completed 41% of all eligible projects that we've received have been completed. That means folks are back home, folks have safe access back to their home and their properties again. You can see our top four counties, without a doubt. Haywood is number one. Unfortunately, that's where most of the damage took place, and we spent a lot of our attention. Haywood, Yancey, Buncombe, and McDowell Counties are our top four counties, and we spend quite a bit of time in each of those counties. Okay? One of the other things I want to highlight, if you look down at the bottom, you can see that we have a total of 112 active projects that involve housing repair. This could be anything from a minor repair to a roof for just some minor damage, to complete total rebuilds and replacements. We've got lots of replacements going on, especially of single wide, double wide, and some modular home units as well. If you look just to the right of that, you can see that we have 238 active roads and bridge projects. This is the lion's share of where we're spending a lot of our time. Roads and bridges have really experienced quite a bit of trouble over tropical storm Fred, and our team, we spend quite a bit of time working on that. Of that, you can see we have a total of 350 active projects right now. Again, 248 of the projects have been completed. Our last slide just shows you again, just a comparison of where Haywood County is. You can see right now, active in Haywood, we have 70 home repair projects going on. And again, that includes home repairs, home replacements. We have 70 active roads and bridges projects going on right now, and we've completed 102. So we're very, very proud of the accomplishments that our team has made to this point, and we're going to continue to push forward. And again, I can't thank the county support enough. Guys have been fantastic, opened up the doors, given us access to resources, working with the local folks, from permitting to the folks in environmental, everything's just been fantastic. So our last slide is just, again, just a little bit about our contact information. We do have a website. I'd like to encourage anyone, if you have any damage at your property, you know, of loved ones, friends, families, neighbors that had damage and they didn't apply yet, send them to us. As Director Trumper said, a lot of times, especially in this part of North Carolina, folks said, hey, you know what, there's people who need help more than I do. Well, you know what, we're here to help everyone. So if you've got a need, you know somebody who has a need, please send them to us. They can go to our website. We've got a couple of telephone numbers, and I'll tell you by now, if you talk to some folks, they've probably got the cell number of one of these folks back here as well. So there's all kinds of contact information, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity, Director Trumper or not, and the rest of the team would be happy to answer any questions you may have, and will also be available after the meeting tonight. Thank you.
I will say that the state has really helped. The feds, not so much, but the state really has. So I know Brandon and Tommy can...
Yeah, I'd like to say, I appreciate you guys. Appreciate you being here. I've sent several folks to you, and I know that you guys have stepped up to the plate, no doubt. I get a lot of good comments. Everybody I've sent up here, they've commented, thank you. So we appreciate what you guys have done. I do have a question. I know that, so I was looking over the numbers here, for example, on the short-term housing, see there that there was $4 million there, of course, the payments and obligated is not that much. Is that money that can be spent in another place, or is it allocated for that specifically?
Right now, that money is dedicated just to short-term housing. We are working with the General Assembly to see about getting that so that we can shift it between different unmet needs, but as of right now, we do not have that capability.
Okay. I know that we can make a few phone calls as well to try to help with that, but I know from personally having contacts in that area, you know, family and friends, that that's not as big of a need right now. We do have other needs, so that's the reason I asked that question. So thank you for that, and that's all I have. Tommy, you got anything else?
Richard, could the folks that are with you raise their hands so we could recognize them?
Absolutely.
I want to give, I want to give a round of applause to you, sir. Because I can tell you, I've got family that live up there and property, and I've been boots on the ground since day one, so, all of us have, okay? But I can say, I'm proud to be a North Carolinian. I'm proud to be a Tar Heel, because North Carolina has stepped up. Your department, I mean, it's just been phenomenal. The help, you came in and immediately gave help, and so that means a lot. Always, Secretary Troxer, our Department of Agriculture, they were here on the ground the day after, and you guys, not just our legislative delegation, you know, when folks are hurting in a disaster, you know, these people that play politics, identity politics, they don't care if you're a Republican, or a Democrat, or Independent. Their house is down the river down there in a pile of toothpicks, you know, they're looking for help. And I just appreciate how everybody came together and helped them poor people up there that got flooded out, and I appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On this first slide, I guess you gave us, where it's, we talk about home reconstructions, you started with a $20 million original amount. So we have $13,000, $13 million left in the coffers that has not been allocated or spent, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So how do we, how do we help you find the right people so that that money does not go unspent?
Absolutely. Our long-term reconstructions usually are the slowest-moving part of a project like this. It takes a little bit longer to get applications processed for those major projects, but there are folks that haven't stepped up. There are folks that are living in houses that are unsafe, that have had water flood the basement, the heat systems torn out, that haven't come forward. We know Raleigh's a long way from Haywood County, and it takes time to build trust with families. And the successes of helping one family usually leads to being introduced to those other families that are a little more hesitant to step forward. So ma'am, if you know a family that is, that needs help, Kristen and John, they're our faces of Haywood County. They're here day in and day out. Have them come see us. We heard from Ms. Parham, there are certain communities that don't trust government in general. That's going to take a little bit longer to reach some of those communities. Little bits at a time, small successes, but we intend to try to find a way to spend every single penny of that. But if they're our families, or you've got an idea, we are very much open to listening.
So on the beginning session of this, I've never been to the state convention for county commissioners before, but there was a new initiative, about 100 counties prepared, that came from the state level of county commissioners to help us navigate the waters on disasters. And Haywood County's disaster was large enough, you know, we were up against those coastal counties that have had floods that have been there, you know, the water was there for weeks before it started to recede. So it definitely piqued my interest of all the, because the federal government has been very slow in a lot of steps, and may continue to be from what they told us on Thursday. But that would be one thing that I would say, and maybe Brandon and Tommy specifically would know people up there, that, you know, there's no timeframe, but eventually, if the money's not, if it's not requested, it will eventually go somewhere. And if we can help our own here in the county, then we certainly should be the microphone that gets those people in touch with you.
One of the reasons we decided to have an office here in Haywood, other than the gracious offer from your team, you can't do this from Raleigh.
Right.
You have to do recovery where the event happened. And the only way we can see to make progress in Haywood County is to be in Haywood County.
Did you meet with, or did you find additional applicants? We had a meeting out at Crestview, wasn't it Crestview Baptist, Crestview Baptist Church? Did people come forth from that meeting?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. We had three of our staff there that evening. We probably stayed until they turned the lights off and thrown us out that evening. And we got phone calls for the days following. Dana said it right, most people have one of our cell phone numbers. You don't get an office number here in a voicemail. If you do, it just means we're on the phone, but we are very available. And we try to attend this event, the event at Crestview. We intend to be at the Day of Remembrance in case there are families still looking for help. We need to have more interaction, we need to find those other families, but that's only going to come from folks that know people that are still suffering.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure that we understood that number. That's a lot of money.
Yes, ma'am.
When's the, when is the last new inquiry regarding a request been made to the office? When's the last time someone's come in, someone new that you're not working on? I mean, is that...
Today.
Today?
Absolutely.
So has it trickled down for the last little bit, or, I mean, you still seeing that, or what?
No, absolutely, sir. You know, of course, in the front end, there are hundreds of folks that are looking for help. We never envisioned, as if we could be standing here today in front of you, that we'd have 600 families looking for help. In eastern North Carolina, over a three-year window, we see a number of around 1,000 people apply to our program. So to have 600 people in six months apply and get on the list for help is just, it's amazing. That number, of course, does slow down as we help families and we work through some of the projects, but every single day, somebody asks for help, whether it's here in Haywood or across the other 10 impacted counties, every single day, somebody asks for help.
Okay. If the money's not spent, it just goes back to the state?
That's what the law says. We don't intend to turn much of this back in. That $15 million for roads and bridges went fast.
Yeah.
We beg daily, weekly, to have the ability to move that money around.
But for home reconstructions, I mean, so far, just 32% has been spent, and it's been a year after the incident. Do you anticipate that being a full 100%?
Absolutely. Right now, we had, the first 15 houses went out for bid. It was manufactured housing, single wides, double wides, modular homes. The team's working on two additional bid packets as we speak. One is out for bid, the other's about to be released. We are going to continue to put out bid projects for local vendors to bid on until that money is gone.
Okay. The folks, and I know you were here at public, or at least a public hearing regarding the CDGB grant, and Ms. Parham had some comments about some folks that haven't, I don't know that they don't look for funds, or they're need funds to 62%, that, so can those folks apply as well, or do they not qualify?
We want everybody to apply. We don't want anybody to think they might not qualify and don't apply. Let's get an application put in, and let's sit down and look through it.
Okay.
There are traditional reasons why families don't apply. Sometimes it's ownership. One of the team members here tonight's our young attorney, Wilson, and he specializes in working through property ownership issues with families. working through property ownership issues with families. So, there are, there are ways, traditional obstacles for families. We do try to work around as many of those within the laws we can.
Okay. All right, thank you. We, I really appreciate you being here and providing this service to the folks of Haywood County.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I also, I also wanna give a shout out to Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Tommy Long. They, they're from that community, and I know they've answered a lot of calls, and I think Cambridge County's blessed to have you guys and, and your wives. They chipped in and helped April and Stacy when it first happened, and, you know, I was talking today, and Wednesday will be a year, that, the year anniversary. So, I'm, I'm really glad that you guys got elected, and then, and then you were there for them to, for the residents there to, to reach out to. Because I felt, I feel like that's helped get information to them, that they may not otherwise have gotten, because they know y'all personally. So, I appreciate that. And I also wanna give a shout out to Bill Martin, I guess it's Bill the Baptist, and the Baptist, I'm not sure what the name of that organization is, but I, I'm a land surveyor by trade, and so, we were doing, we do those elevation certificates. And used to, I didn't do those, because I didn't have GPS. So, we got GPS a few years ago, and I'm glad I can, can provide that service, because, and I always try to cater to those folks if they need it. It's like, Bill came in this morning, and I had my guy go out there this afternoon, to do the elevation certificate. And, and what was really amazing was, Bill said, I had done the elevation certificate in March for the initial, and then we have to do a final. So, I did a final today, so that was , whatever how many months that is later. And he said that he had three more homes that he was getting ready to start on. So, and I asked him, I said, well, do you guys, are you going to Kentucky? And he said, we've already got three hundred of us up there working. So, I wanna give a shout out to him too, as well as you guys. And I know y'all work together, and, and we really appreciate it. And it's really helped, helped our residents. So, thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll move on to number two, under Agency Reports. It's an update on T-Mobile Internet Services and Expansion in Haywood County. We have T-Mobile Public Sector, Carolina's Representative Heidi, Heidi, if I butcher your name, forgive me, but it's V-Cant?
Vera.
Vera Cant, okay.
Thank you. So, I am Heidi Vera Cant, and we are here, we were asked to come and talk a little bit more about T-Mobile's investment in Haywood County, and how it impacts home broadband. And so, that, that's something, that's really what we're here to talk about. And we have a couple different people, myself, who represents the public sector, as well as a couple other folks here to talk about their impact in the investment that we've made in Haywood County. But really, we're here just to talk about the investments made, and then how it can benefit residents through providing more internet access to residential homes.
Good evening. You can switch to the slide. So, Haywood County Commissioners appreciate us inviting us, residents of Haywood County. We do have home, high-speed internet now available for Haywood County. It's, it's very easy to check. If you go to T-Mobile's website, the top left is an internet button. You click on that, and you put in the address, and it'll say if you're eligible for high-speed internet unlimited. This week, we are launching a high-speed internet light as well. So, it all depends on capacity of towers, and you'll hear more on our engineering in a, in a few minutes. But if you're near a tower that has a lot of capacity, you'll be eligible for the unlimited. If you're not near that tower, but in the fringe areas, and that's a lot of our folks that live out here, even where I live in Fletcher, North Carolina, in the mountains, you'll be eligible for high-speed internet light, which is a hundred gigabytes up to three hundred gigabytes. This is especially, I mean, really, it'll help those folks that only have satellite as an option right now. If you wanted to do our Metro by T-Mobile brand prepaid, you go to Metro's website, you hit Plans, Internet, still put in your address, and it'll tell you if you're eligible for the unlimited, the light, or if it's not available right now. If it's not available right now, we are building out capacity daily. I mean, it's, it's, it's quick. Just put in your address, you'll get an email. If it's unavailable now, you will get an email when it's, when it's available. I wanted to speak about the Affordable Connectivity Plan 2, if you wanna go to the next slide. So, this is a great program that the government's funding. It's for those folks that will be available for this, if, if, if you, if, it's for families or single folks that need some assistance through the government. If you go to our, if you go, actually, it's the easiest way, go to Russ Avenue, that Metro store, and ask them. They'll, they'll run you through the application process, and if you're approved, the government will pay thirty dollars a month off the, the monthly reoccurring charge, which is amazing. But that, that, that program is through the government, and we're also a part of that through Metro. I'm gonna pass it off to Heidi for the next portion.
Thank you. So, T-Mobile, as, as a company and as a brand, what we've been able to do with our investment in 5G is bring broadband to places where it wasn't accessible before. And I think that what the pandemic has taught us, one of the things the pandemic has taught us, is it's really shined a light on digital inequity in, in our country. And, one of the things that T-Mobile can do through our 5G network is bring this to homes that didn't have options before. And so, I wanna go to the next slide. We also do this, though, for public sector as well, and I can go through this pretty briefly, but this is more for just the, the Commissioners who know, as well as County Manager. We do work with school districts throughout the state, providing no-cost and low-cost internet hotspots for students who are struggling to get internet access at home. We do have our Project Ten Million that can provide that at no cost. Then, we also support, outside of broadband connectivity, we also support cities and counties, and things like first responder connectivity, and things like that. If you'll go to the next slide, this is just one example of what we have for, specifically for the public sector, if there are, what has, is becoming very, very popular, is remote cameras, remote, and that's for like the safety and security, of course. And then, things like fixed wireless for a, a senior center, a community center, whatnot. If there is any address that's a municipal building that doesn't have high-speed internet today, that's something that we can potentially help with. And then, I'm gonna pass it over to our network team, who's gonna talk about the specific towers, and kind of where, where residents are gonna be a good fit for our home broadband services as well.
Good evening, County Commissioners and citizens. My name's Eric Smith. I'm a radio frequency engineer. And western North Carolina is actually my, my area that I oversee every day. From break fix to design to optimization, customer complaints, whatever. So, I wanted to, if you could go to the next slide, please, wanted to just show a, a high-level overview. You've probably heard, seen our commercials, you know, T-Mobile, we, we have extended 5G Ultra capacity coverage. And we, we do have coverage here in western North Carolina, specifically Haywood County. And that's what I would like to show you on the next slide. So, on this next slide, you're, you're gonna see the boundary of Haywood County. We've got cell sites, and each one of those, you can see the little towers there. If we start up to the north, where we border with Tennessee, we do have cell site coverage up along Interstate forty. We do have coverage, you can see the multiple cell site icons that are, you know, from the north coming south, you see central Haywood County. So, this is just an overview. We have low-band coverage. Low-band is essential for in-building penetration. We have mid-band coverage. We have two bands available. That, those carriers are gonna be primarily for, you know, your high-speed data. We, and we also have 2.5, 2.5, which we refer to as 4G. And also, on, let's see, out of the sixteen sites that we have on air commercial across the county, seventy-five percent of those sites do have low-band, 4G, and 5G. 5G is gonna get you your really high data speeds. We also have in the works, we have a, a bill plan that we, we work with our sales team, we work with customer feedback. We have, right now, in the pipeline and funded, we have four additional cell sites that are gonna be built out. One of those cell sites will be built out by the end of 2022, and we have the other three that will be going into construction and should be on air commercial by first quarter 2025. As you can see, the concentration mainly of our cell site density is gonna be going from east to west, right around central, the central part of Haywood County. If we can go to the next slide? Okay, this map, and I know it's, it looks a little weird here, but basically, this is a coverage overlay. If you can kinda just remember back where I showed you the coverage up along Interstate forty going into Tennessee and central. Next slide, please. So, these two coverage overlay maps are just zoomed in, zoomed in areas, so you can see specifically where we have coverage all the way to the north, and I'm coming south, getting into north, northern Duaneville area. Go to the next slide, please. This is gonna be the central Haywood vicinity, going from east to west. And you could see the, the light pinkish color overlay is gonna be your 4G and your 5G coverage. And you can see it's pretty heavily there. And I mentioned earlier that seventy-five percent of the sites that we do have on air commercial do have 4G and 5G low-band coverage. And as, once again, that's gonna be essential to provide coverage for the students, and giving them access and the residents to internet service. And I think that's the last slide we have. Yes, that will be the last slide. All right, thank you very much.
Our network is ready in Haywood. We're excited. We do have a new store that's gonna be built. Should be open this year. Our leasing, our, our department now is doing some lease negotiations, but we will be able to service many residents, thankfully. I know now, a lot of folks will either go to the Metro Store. They do sell T-Mobile inside, it's an authorized retailer, or a lot of the residents of Haywood, I mean, Patton Avenue, they drive all the way to Asheville. So, we're gonna save you a lot of time from having the store right here locally, okay?
Okay. I was gonna ask that. I'm glad you cleared that.
Yeah, that, that basically wraps it up. We, just, our purpose in being here is just to let you all know that we are here. And I know that when internet comes into a community, when it was, when internet is scarce, it can really change the face of, of a community, and change economic opportunities, educational opportunities. And so, more than anything, we just wanted to let you all know. We have invested, and we are here. And if there's any way we can partner or help, we're definitely open to that.
Okay. Well, thank y'all for coming out.
Thank you.
You know, Kevin, I will mention, I see, I see Dr. Porto, she's on our broadband committee, and David, David, you gonna make some comments?
Oh, okay. Well, I went to a broadband session at the state meetings this past week, and you may already know this, but that six-year limit that some of these companies like Charter Spectrum had to build out their system, where they marked that area on the map, I know Crusoe was mentioned, you know, they got six years to spend that funding. Well, they had FCC personnel from the federal government, they had Mr. Denny from the state, and that's fixing to be dissolved. If they're not gonna make an effort quickly to provide service, they're gonna try to bridge around that, and they're, they're working together. So, expect to hear something on that, because the feds and the state got their heads together, and they're saying, look, this is ridiculous. You can't just pencil in an area on the map and claim it and not do anything. So, but, but any options for broadband coverage, we appreciate, because, you know, we're hurting here in the county with, with mountains, valleys, and rocks. You know, we, we have trouble. And they, you know, with any, any other options to help, that's, I always appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, the, the next item under Agency Reports is the Santech Republic Services White Oak Landfill Annual Report. We have the Republic General Manager for western North Carolina and east Tennessee, Steve Slater. Welcome, Steve.
Good evening. We said I'm here to give the annual landfill report for White Oak Landfill. All right, from period July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirty, twenty twenty-two, total in-county volume was ninety thousand one hundred sixty-six point five seven tons. Total out-of-county volume was seventy-seven thousand nine point seven three tons. Total combined volume into the landfill excluding the brush was one hundred and sixty-seven thousand one seventy-six point three zero tons. For the financial impact to the county, the host fee, first quarter, July one to September thirtieth, was forty-seven thousand two ninety-three seventy-five cents. Q2 was thirty-two thousand four seventy-nine ninety. The third quarter was thirty-five thousand three ninety-six fifteen. Fourth quarter, twenty-nine thousand seven thirty-two twenty. Total host fee paid in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two was one hundred and forty-four thousand nine oh two. And since the inception of the contract, host fees paid are eight, one hundred and eighty-five thousand three fifty-four thirteen. Remaining life of the landfill, total permitted airspace for phases one through seven was nine million three hundred and eighty thousand three eighty-nine cubic yards. Remaining permitted airspace is six million oh thirty-six five sixty-seven cubic yards. And remaining life expectancy of the landfill is currently at twenty-six point one years, at fourteen hundred and sixty-nine pounds per cubic yard. We do foresee in, in the next year or so, that actual site life raising. Phase five, current operating cell, the construction was completed late twenty twenty. It was a six-point-seven-five acre cell. Currently have three hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-four cubic yards of airspace remaining, and that should carry us to February twenty twenty-three. Five B, that's the next operating cell. Construction will be completed by the end of this year. Contractors, contracts been awarded, and contractors will be on-site next week or the following week to start cell construction. It's three-point-two acres. It'll give us an additional one million fifty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty cubic yards, giving us an estimated three years of life before another cell would need to be constructed. For landfill planning, the cells that are shaded in gray, those are actively constructed permitted cells. The cells shaded in green, including five B, the next cell that we're starting construction here momentarily, and six A and six B, those are cells that will be constructed in the next five years. And the cells shaded in the blue, those are future cells, five years and beyond, to take the landfill to its end of life. The red shaded areas where we're currently operating and filling now. And on the next slide, it's future, once the new cell, five B, is constructed, the red areas where we'll be placing waste. So, a couple things going on at the landfill. We are in the process of installing a new, we had to replace the scales. We've been operating on temporary scales for the past couple months, awaiting our supply chain issues to resolve, and us have a new scale delivered. In Q2, we installed four passive solar flares, just to help destroy some landfill gas. Adding, planning to add two to three more by the end of the year. And the landfill gas design plan is in process. We are getting, following the state requirements of putting together a plan. The White Oak landfill is not that far away from having to have an active gas collection system and a flare put in. So, we have, it's a kind of a two-year window of getting a plan approved by the state, implementing the plan, and then having the gas collection system developed and, and working. Anyone have any questions on... Anyone have any questions on White Oak landfill?
You'd indicated that, that you thought the cell, cell life would be increasing over what you projected here?
Yes, as, as we're working through, we're on, we went into a new cell at the beginning of last year. As you're fluffing those in, you're not compacting your waste like you normally would once you're on good flat working ground. We'll see a lower density in pounds per cubic yard as we go into five B. But as five B and five A come together, and we'll be working on pretty solid flat ground, the den, the compaction ratio will go up, and that's the trigger, that's the main potion that you use in the formula to calculate airspace because it's how much, how tightly are you packing it in there? As your, as your density goes up, so does your site life. And it's a little suppressed right now because of the operational challenges going into the new cell. So it's fourteen sixty-eight, I believe. We can, we can get it closer to fifteen fifty per cubic yard, and that'll, that'll move that number.
Do you remember what the estimation for the life of the landfill was last year?
It, it was twenty, twenty-eight point two, I believe.
And so what makes it, I know, I know you said that you're moving into this, this other area. Is that what changes it?
No.
I mean, that's quite a decrease to go down two years in the year.
So what, it, it's, I explained this as the Solid Waste Board today. It's a different mathematical equation that Santech used for estimating full life of space, life of site, and the formula that Republic Services uses. There's, so every year, as you're putting waste into the landfill, you're also getting settlement from all the decomposing waste that is placed years and years ago. We look at it as a three-year period where we take into account that settling. We don't try to project out what the settling is going to be twenty-five years from now. Santech made estimates on what that settling is. So they're long, they did, they give two numbers, a three-year average, and then long-term. We don't, we don't try to guess what that settling is going to be. It's a more conservative approach for what your actual life of site is going to be, but it's, it's a different equation.
And since Republic has taken over, have you had any, um, I would call them violations or notices that maybe we weren't seeing before with Santech?
We had, and we had an NOB, um, in the first two weeks of us taking over operation, resulting from poor operational practices of Santech prior to us. It was stormwater and sediment runoff from a large stockpile area that was not vegetated or had no ENS erosion sediment runoff controls. And we're in the process, we're in the process of closing that out with the state.
Okay. And you took over when?
May third of last year. Or May, I'm sorry, May ninth, ma'am.
So May ninth of twenty-one?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the only one you've had, the only notice of violation or?
Yes.
Okay. And why, why do you think, is it just because of the age of the landfill? You mentioned that within two years, we'll need an active gas collection system. Is that standard with landfills, or is it something as the landfill ages?
It depends on how much volume you're taking in on an annual basis, the footprint of the, of the landfill. Um, Derek had to leave, he's my environmental manager. But basically, it's a calculation of how much gas the landfill is producing. Um, they are lowering the threshold next year.
They, the government?
The government, yes. EPA. That will probably push, because right now, White Oak's very, very close. And it, it, it just happens. As landfills get older, it's holding more waste. You start producing more and more methane. Um, if it was going to trigger at some point, them reducing, um, the threshold, and that's not parts per million, but it was fifty, they're taking it down to like thirty-two. That will probably, White Oak will probably trip over that threshold and have to put in a active gas collection system.
Commissioner Long and myself met with, uh, with these guys earlier today and spent quite some time with them and asking a lot of the same questions and giving good answers, of course. Uh, so we appreciate you guys coming and giving us a report. We think that over time, even though they're using this three-year deal, that we will gain some life. So, uh, not only that, but looking at the gas, we was looking at some options with the gas as well. So, uh, a lot of options down the road that we might have to discuss. But for now, it looks like things are, are, are moving in the right direction. And, and since these guys have took over, Republic's took over, I will say this, and I know John would agree, who's sitting back there, that we've seen a lot of change for the better. Uh, place looks different, cleaner. So, uh, I think, I think they're making the, the right moves. I don't know if Commissioner Long would agree with that or not.
We've invested a significant amount of money in the past year.
I was gonna, I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I know you've invested quite a bit and, and doing a lot of work, uh, down there.
Over, over half a million dollars.
You know, and what I will say, probably a good time to bring this up because there's a lot of miscommunication about this, but, uh, having you guys there, it does save the taxpayers a lot of money in the, in the county, uh, by having you guys run that. So with that, I'll turn it over to you if you've got any comments.
I, I don't have anything to add, really. Uh, you know, Commissioner Rogers and I do sit on the Solid Waste Committee, and we appreciate you coming and sitting down with us this evening, every year, and sitting down before the meeting and go over all the, the nuts and bolts of this.
Absolutely.
I do, I have noticed, you know, you, you, I really appreciate talking to your guy. What's his name? Yeah. Well, John's over there.
John, Derek, Derek had the, the family event.
Yeah, I enjoyed talking with him. Uh, the Republic Company uses a different mathematical equation. They just look three years. Like, like you caught that, that was a good find. That jumped off the page at us during the meeting back there earlier. But, uh, yeah, we do, we do think that over time, that thing will settle. So, uh, that, that is something that jumps off the page at you. But it is a new company, and they've got a new, new calculation and a new way of looking at things. So we do, we do feel good about the way things are going.
Commissioner Best, as, as we discussed earlier, with the active gas collection system, that could open up the opportunity for the county to have a gas-to-energy plant as another revenue source for the, for the county.
So I, I'm sure you probably know some of the history of Haywood County, but people in Haywood County are very passionate about their landfill, and it's cost us a fair amount of money over the years. You know, just things not going exactly, not necessarily White Oak Landfill, but Francis Farm and just not going the way it should. And it's just good for us to, I'm sure these gentlemen are doing a great job keeping watchful eye on it. But anytime something like that changes hands, you know, it's our responsibility to ask those questions, so.
One hundred percent. And, and we welcome any, any of y'all to come out, and we'll give you a tour whenever you want.
Yeah. I actually had a tour with Chris when I first came onto the board. And I was sitting here thinking, I have a notebook where he drew me a picture of the, um, I guess the elementary mechanics of a landfill. So, so I have been out there and spent about half a day, so.
I will say, they've been very open, uh, to having us visit and showing us around, answering any questions. I can assure our folks in the county that, uh, Commissioner Long and myself, especially being on this board, we keep our thumb on it and try to watch over it. And, uh, it, not only for us, but I know, as you guys pointed out earlier, it's beneficial for them too, that that landfill lasts us as long as it can. Because if they don't have it, they ain't got a job. So it's beneficial for both of us. So we're working hard to make sure that we get, uh, every bit of life out of that field.
The, the life of that site is every bit of, is, is important to myself and Republic than it is Haywood County.
We do appreciate you working with us. We got the, the wood, I think, the diameter where we got that, where we could have our residents go down there and dispose of that.
Correct.
We lowered our, uh, county landfill tax, which we got no, we got no accolades over that. You know, you get a tax raise, everybody goes nuts. You, you lower taxes and nobody says a word. But, uh, you know, we, we're able as commissioners to vote that tax, uh, cut in, and I, and I was proud to be able to do that. So we, we did that, what, two years ago? Kind of flew under the radar, but, uh, some people hadn't forgotten.
Just, just kind of, Kirk and I have been here a long time, and we were part of privatizing the landfill. And, uh, we, we privatized the landfill in twenty-eleven. Uh, Santech promised us thirty years of landfill life. They guaranteed that. And eleven years later, you're telling us, we got twenty-six years life. And it has to do with the way you guys operate the landfill. That privatization that we did at that time saved the taxpayers one point nine million dollars per year. So, and, and I guess the dollars change as time goes on. It's probably a lot higher than that. But if you just take the one point nine million and multiply it by ten years, uh, that, those are, that's money that people get to, you know, it's nineteen million dollars that, that the taxpayer are keeping in their pocket. And that's the bottom line. And when you say there's twenty-six years left to go, that's from, directly from us privatizing the, the landfill. And I know we were, at times, we get criticized for that. But when the private sector knows how to do something better than the public sector, we all win. And we have been winning by that because we're keeping that money in our pockets, and it's not being, been going out. And so we still have almost twenty-six years. And I'm confident that you, you'll even go beyond that because you guys have the financial, uh, you guys have the incentive to make sure that landfill lasts as long as possible because you're making money and the taxpayers are saving money.
And not to get into the science, but when, when you're talking life, life of site for a landfill in number of years, that's a, it's a moving target. It's not a linear, we were open one year, that's a year off the life. As we design new cells, we do hydrological study, we may be able to go deeper than, we, we tend to model that pretty conservatively. We may be able to go deeper. We're working with the state to change the permitting. It'll give us an extra foot of airspace across the entire landfill. That'd probably pick up another two, three years.
How many millions did you say that was, Steve? If we can add that foot?
The, the additional redesign with property, we can add over a million cubic yards.
Million cubic yards, and we're, we're on a yearly basis right now?
Using about a hundred and seventy thousand.
Hundred and sixty-nine, I believe it was.
We're looking at it from every, every angle. Um,
So that would gain us five years.
The longer it's open, the longer we're making money for Republic and saving the county money.
How many landfills does Republic operate?
Republic operates two hundred and twenty-seven landfills, I believe.
And just to get a good example, I thought of, we, we used to bail, bail our trash and take it down there like, you know, like stacking hazel bale. A bale hay, bales of hay, I'm sorry, bales of hay. So we were able to, uh, but Santech were like, no, that's the wrong way to do it. You break it up and you compact it. And because all those little crevices takes up room. And then when it settles, you have more room and you have more airspace.
Yes.
And the county didn't know how to do all that. But you guys are experts at doing it. The private section knew how to do it. And you've done it, and you've done a great job at it. We appreciate it.
Appreciate that. I personally manage three landfills for Republic.
It, it, there is, it's very scientific, I know. And it's, um, when I first came on the board, I heard a lot of comments about the landfill being, um, you know, managed by somebody other than the county. And it, it's complex. I don't think it's something that we should be doing. I think there's some, that we should use a firm to do it. I, I don't think we need to be in the landfill business.
And they're very, they're very capital intensive.
Yes.
No, I, you said, I wanted to say, no, that, no, that's what I wanted to get across. Yeah. Years ago, what we were looking at in expense and trying to, to do it ourselves. And we'd probably sit, be sitting here looking at nineteen years left. And we would have probably put in five or six hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment. And, and here we've got twenty-six years left. So I'm tickled that we made that decision to do that.
Appreciate that, sir.
That one point nine million that you're talking about is probably double that today.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. That's what it was then. So, yeah, you're right, Brandon.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you so much for coming. Okay, we'll move on to discussion judgment agenda. I do not have anything. Does anyone else have something? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions about the five items on the consent agenda? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, you have a discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. The first item of the regular agenda is to request approval of the twenty twenty-one settlement of collections. We have our tax collector, Greg West, here today. Welcome, Greg.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I'm here to request approval of the twenty twenty-one settlement of collections. The net levy for the year of twenty twenty-one was forty-seven million six hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. We collected forty-six million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars for a collection rate of ninety-eight point four zero percent. We have a remaining balance as of June thirtieth of seven hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um, we've issued sixty-eight attachments, garnishments this, this year. We've got about two hundred and ten active payment plans going. We're working with folks to, to make payments. Um, we have about a hundred and forty-six accounts that, uh, people get their payment directly taken out of their check each month. It's our ACH program, works very well for us. And we felt like we had a pretty good year. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'd like to request approval, please.
No, I can tell Greg, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse to death, but we've had a lot of good information down there. And this, this map, I brought a copy back for all my fellow commissioners. We still rank the eighty-fourth lowest out of one hundred counties in, in tax rate. Uh, so that's something to be proud of. There's, there's eighty-four counties that have a higher mileage rate than we do.
Yes.
And, and we were able to fund, fully fund our police force, fully fund our EMS, our public safety, give our employees a raise, and still maintain that position in the state. And so, uh, I know that, that comes with hard work from our, our county staff and, uh, you know, doing good things for our employees. It's paid off with the job retention, our sheriff's department, uh, fully staffed. You know, I, I just, uh, I don't think sometimes we don't get our message out. And, and I can tell you from talking to some other commissioners across the state, Haywood County's got a lot to be proud of. And we're blessed to be living here. And, uh, we're blessed to be in the situation that we're in. Uh, I know we're staring this jail project in the face, and that's, that's something that we, you know, we're just going to have to do. But, you know, we get, we're in good shape. We're in good shape to tackle that.
Well, in, these taxes fund twenty-five fire districts, ten road districts, one sanitation district, and we collect over five million this year for the, in the county landfill fee. So that money goes to make sure if somebody answers the telephone, EMS, or nine-one-one, and it goes to our schools, uh, as well as our local fire department. So it's important. And, um, I think we've, we've done a good job this year, and, um, look forward to trying to continue that.
On your number for, you said levies, is that what your first number was that you gave tonight on the collections?
Yes, the levy. Yes.
And what number was that again?
Forty-seven million six hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars.
And how do those numbers, um, stack up against previous years? I know our collection rate is the, the best it's been in years, decades.
Well, the levy has gone up. Uh, we did a reevaluation, uh, I guess in twenty twenty, twenty-one. And so it increased over six million dollars, the levy did. And so that was more money to collect.
True. I was actually asking about the programs that you have people on. I think you've got some payment programs and things like that. How have, how does the, the number of people on those programs correlate to years previous?
I think we have more people now, maybe on payment plans, you know, than we did before. And, but we've had less garnishment and attachments as people have caught up and gotten on payment plans so that we know, you know, each month what, what we can expect. So it's, it's better. It's gotten better.
That's good. I think that speaks to the job that you're doing. And it's, um, the people that I know that have dealt with your office have said that, you know, you can deliver the medicine. We all pay taxes. None, none of us like it, but we all pay it. And then you're able to deliver the medicine with, you know, respect and courtesy, and people appreciate that, so.
It's very important. It just takes one bad person to, uh, you know, create a bad message for all of us. So.
Yeah.
I appreciate that very much.
Yes, we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then Greg, go up again. The, number two is to request approval of order collections for the tax collections department.
Yes, this is the time of year where I asked the Board of County Commissioners to give me the authority. give me the authority and all the means necessary to collect the current, the taxes for the upcoming year. So I ask your approval for that, please.
Do you have any questions on that?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Okay. Thank you for that. And the third and final of the regular agenda is to request approval of the budget amendment. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Special program materials, emergency efforts, $20,000 to appropriate contingency funds to cover associated costs of campers for flood victims to be reimbursed by the North Carolina Management, Emergency Management Finance Director, Christian Owen. Hey, Christian?
Hello. Yes, we're requesting $20,000 from contingency to cover just some miscellaneous costs, the transportation, maintenance setup of these campers to house flood victims. They have to be cleaned between each tenant. This should just cover us hopefully till the end of the, the process for the campers.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that one?
How many campers did we have total? Do you know?
We had 13, eight. Sorry.
13, eight? And she's our finance person.
So we had eight, and we have how many left?
How many is left, Chris? How many?
I think they all laid it.
Eight, okay.
But we, we just did a resolution last time to donate. That's where the 13 came from, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item three of the regular agenda.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have appointments or closed session tonight. Before we adjourn, I want to make sure that I announce that the first meeting in September will be Tuesday, September 6th at 9:00 AM due to the observance, observance of Labor Day, which is, you know,
I'm glad to see you rescind the emergency declaration.
I just signed it.
It was time.
Yeah.
You know, it seems like the last two years has been consumed by reactive stuff. We got hit with COVID, then we got hit with the flood. Lot of things, you know, we maybe wanted to do. You're reacting to these disasters, you know, and it, it, it just throws everybody for a loop. So I'm glad to see you rescind that, Kev.
Yeah, I'm glad to do it. Okay, does anybody have any other questions?
No, sir. I said, no more business.
Surely there's something else we can do.
Date 22. Kev, Brian, you got anything to add?
It's past Brian's bedtime, so I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.